Regents.
(coughs) Let me introduce you to the pride of the United States of America and to be honored for which it stands. One nation under God, the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome guests. We had a executive session before the start of tonight's meeting. We were discussing some potential real estate purchase. And I see no judge. Officer Stitch, you're gonna have to wait a few minutes.
You'll wait for a judge for the rest of your life.
Get used to it. As soon as anybody sees him come in, we'll stop. Any visitors or public comments tonight? Mind you, you have a roomful of police officers. You could still make comment. Well, nobody's gonna bother you. No? All right. Announcements. The next meeting of the Board of Supervisors is Tuesday, June 18th. Kids Castle's closed for restoration. Reopening is anticipated at the end of July 2013. I said that on purpose. 2013 discount park tickets are available. To purchase, contact the administration office or online at doylestownpa.org. The fishing derby is June 16th, rain or shine, at Peace Valley Park. The administration offices has details, so please do contact, because you need to register. Sounds of Summer Concert Series begins Wednesday, June 26th. And there are brochures over there. And the first concert is in Central Park, the Robert Eric Band. And he is a Billy Joel kinda guy. So he's toured with Billy Joel, as a matter of fact. So he's, I guess he's done some opening for him, and I think it should be a fantastic concert. 7:00 PM, Central Park. It's free. The public comment period for the minor act of 537 Sewage Facilities Plan 3M Component, Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Section, and Vicinity is open until June 14th, 2013. The comments must be received in writing and received by the township no later than June 14th. And it's available here for public inspection. Is it online?
It is online.
It's online as well. All right. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from May 7, 2013.
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
I have one correction.
Oh, sorry. Figure pregnant.
About the fourth page in the land development, under B, where we spoke about the pavilion. And you may recall, well, you weren't here, but I was vehemently against the extension of that review. And the minutes reflect that I abstained. That's diametrically opposed to what I did. I vehemently oppose. So that should be three to one, no. Well, three yes, one no.
Anybody else have any corrections, comments? Notes, minutes stand corrected. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
One abstention and my absence. Next item on the agenda. Hot air balloon, balloons. Mr. Mertens? Is he here? We have a correspondence from Mr. Mertens.
No, I don't believe they're here, but...
No? They're not gonna be here?
No, but we did receive their letter, and they are indicating that they would like the, be able for us to have an ordinance that would stop balloons, hot air balloons, from landing in the area, thereby preventing from flying right overhead. There was an incident that occurred back in the fall, where a hot air balloon coming out of the Buckingham area was flying somewhat low near their property. Their dog was, got excited by the, and frightened by the balloon, and got out of their backyard, and unfortunately was run over by a vehicle, away from their home. And so that is what prompted her to, Mrs. Mertens, to put a survey online and provide us with information. And they have provided that with us. My recommendation to the board, if the board would like to consider it, would be to perhaps share this information with our planning commission and have them review the potential and see if it's worthy of creating an ordinance or not.
I was gonna say, I don't believe you have jurisdiction with respect to the airspace occupied by hot air balloon. And I don't think you have jurisdiction to prevent a emergency landing. You might have jurisdiction to prevent the establishment of a hot air balloon, you know, landing facility, but not if it just happens as a result of an act of God. So, but if you wanna send the planning commission, that'd be fine. I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
Well, I don't know if we wanna spend the time and effort and energy to send it to the planning commission if it's a moot point. And I don't think it's anything to do with, you know, dogs or the incident. But if we don't have the jurisdiction, then I think we should just move on and not waste the valuable time with the planning commission.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I read this lady's, Jennifer Mertens', very detailed survey study, and they're not really saying, let's regulate the airspace. They're saying they shouldn't be allowed to come down and take off in residential community. So that if they could prevent a coming down in a residential community, and they shouldn't be allowed to take off in a residential community. If it's an emergency, that's different. But I think they're just saying, perhaps, that we should be able to have something to say about coming down and taking off planned...
Planned takeoffs.
Planned takeoffs and planned landings. So, I don't know. I would suggest, I would agree that it go to the planning commission just to explore what may or may not, what may or may not be appropriate and legal for us to do. That's what I think.
I think we oughta take the recommendations of our solicitor, of what he presented to us, and I agree that we really don't have jurisdictions in this matter.
All right. So consensus is to go to the planning commission?
Well, in other consensus, I think Mr. Scarborough is saying that, no, we don't have jurisdiction, that it shouldn't go to the planning commission. If I understood...
We take the recommendations of our solicitor.
Well, whatever.
Well, I said, I didn't think I had an issue with respect to planning commission reviewing the planned landing and planned...
Takeoff.
Departure. But the emergency situations and the airspace issue is clearly beyond your jurisdiction.
Okay. So shove it to the planning commission. I mean, respectfully submit to the planning commission for their consideration.
The Honorable is here.
The Honorable, Mark Dupoel.
The Honorable.
Welcome. All right, let's return to the earlier item and the happy item on our agenda. And that is the swearing-in of Officer Jeffrey L. Stitch, Jr. He is here in the room with, looks like a lot of family and friends, but in particular his wife Rachel and daughter Kaylee, who's in the back. We've met Kaylee earlier. Your Honor? Will you do the honors?
Jeff? Yes, somebody to hold up?
Yes. Yes, she's...
If you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. Aye?
Aye. Jeffrey L. Stitch, Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
...and ordinances of Doylestown Township.
And ordinances of Doylestown Township.
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
...and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
...and enforce the law without consideration of a person's race, color, sex.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. And enforce the law without consideration of a person's race, color, sex.
And enforce the law without consideration of a person's race, color, religion, or sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation...
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
National origin...
National origin.
Ancestry...
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability...
Handicap or disability.
Aye?
Aye.
State your name again.
Jeffrey L. Stitch, Jr.
Do further solemnly swear...
Do further solemnly swear.
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without mental reservation...
Without mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
...and that I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
...the duties of police officer...
The duty of police officer.
...with fidelity.
With fidelity.
While they're assembling for pictures, let me introduce you to Jeffrey L. Stitch, Jr. He is 27 years old, lives in Levittown. You've met his wife Rachel and Kylie. He served the United States Air Force, and he's currently serving in the Air National Guard. Officer Stitch received and completed his mandatory Act 120 training from Temple University Police Academy on October 7th, 2010. And he's no longer working for Rockledge Borough Police Department as a part-time officer. He is now a Doylestown Township Police Officer. And welcome, officer and family. Yes, please.
Yeah, it was in the center.
I don't want to...
This is a police...
What are you doing?
We're out of the way, so that we don't get any... Right, Tom? We hide behind Logan, nobody will see us.
I don't think that's gonna save one of all his men. And the...
All right. I should have my badge and all the work room. Thank you for coming.
Well, that's more important. You're all right. No problem, no problem.
I judge.
I have the agenda though.
I judge, I judge.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for coming, as always.
Are we gonna pause a few minutes and let the family and friends and officers go back and party? You've been invited into the inner sanctum of the police department. We're never even invited back there.
Bye-bye.
See you later.
Bye-bye. Nice job on Sunday.
Thank you. All right. All right. Next item on the agenda, Doylestown Commerce Center directional signage. There is a communication, Mr. Shandor, pretty, you know, comprehensive explanation of what he's trying to do there. Zoning officer?
The zoning ordinance is unique in this section in that it allows the Board of Supervisors to approve the directional signage. There was small signage, two square feet placed there, but it does allow it to go up to the six square feet. He would like, apparently people are having trouble identifying which building they're going to visit, and he would like to be able to install the larger signs with the Board's permission with the address with an arrow at the fountain pointing to the two buildings, to the one building 2003 and to the other building 2005, in a nice mounted format. And it would be the maximum of the six feet for the ordinance. And it is in the Board's discretion under the ordinance to allow for that. And it has been there some time, and obviously they've been living with this problem.
What's your recommendation, zoning officer?
Thank you. My recommendation would be for them to be allowed to do this. I think it's important that when people are coming to meet with a business in our township, that they be able to find them and find them quickly.
Is there a motion to approve the manager's recommendation?
So moved.
Second? Ms. R. Second? Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Reports from the solicitor?
Nothing to report, Madam Chairperson.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
No engineer? Manager?
Yes, we have a training request for Mr. Wallace. This is his ability to attend the PICPA training in Hershey, with sharing the class with the DTMA. And since there is an overnight stay, it does require the Board's approval.
Is there a motion to approve? Please.
I make a motion to approve Ken to go do his educational training.
Second? Thank you? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That was five and oh again, I suppose. Any other?
The other item is that we've received quite a significant grant. It's under the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program. This is through the Department of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. It's called the ARL Grant, and we actually received two. One is for the Adaptive Control System. That is what's installed on the parkway. It helps the traffic flow smoother. And then the other one was to do some LEDs as well as replacing on the 611 corridor. We're very fortunate to have received that grant, and Sandra did a great job in helping prepare that grant. And the last thing I have is just a real quick update on ChemFab. I attended a customer advisory group meeting the end of May over at Borough. Unfortunately, the prioritization board for EPA did not set their priorities, and so there's no funding designated for the cleanup at this point in time. But the residents and affected businesses at ChemFab and in Westwick are continuing to meet and monitor. They're hoping to have money available this summer to continue to do groundwater work in the nearby creeks, run and wetlands to see if the plume is moving, and if so, at what rate and what depth. And that's all I have at this time.
I have a question on the ARL funding program, Automated Red Light Enforcement for 611. Is that going to help move the traffic through 611 on that corridor any quicker, faster, more...
That is, the hope is that...
More planned?
Yeah. I mean, that's really the hope with the Adaptive Control Systems, is that it becomes much more traffic responsive and moves the traffic. I mean, as we saw from the report that DVR PC worked with us on, those type of, that was something they actually had hoped could come out of it, would be to improve the traffic signals and the flow of the traffic.
Excellent. Thank you. Make a lot of people happy with that one.
Yes.
Mr. Chuhill?
Thank you. I have an update regarding our Kids Castle project. And I'll just run through some things, where the status is, and as Barbara already mentioned, the anticipated opening is at the end of July, they're hoping. Nevertheless, one, we've got, the flooring is being completed in the castle. And once that's done, the new entrances that used to be at the front, new entrances will be installed. All the designs and plans from the engineers and such have been, I understand, they've all been submitted and to Sinclair and received the township approval there. They were looking, they had some angst about that, making sure that all got done, but that's all completed. The new slides are assembled, which will be really neat when they go up. But the new slides are assembled and will hopefully be placed in the castle in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, there's a couple other fundraising opportunities. There's new Kids Castle t-shirts that I can go online. People can buy them, you know, find them on there. Otherwise, again, to reiterate, hopefully the castle will reopen at the end of July 2013.
Okay, thanks.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Scarborough?
Yes. Well, Sean forgot to mention, yesterday was Doylestown Township's golf outing with the proceeds going to Kids Castle. I don't know what the final numbers were on the proceeds, but we had a nice turnout. It was a great day, and it did stop raining, believe me. And we went out and had a great day and continued. So I just wanted to throw that. But secondly, the municipal authority has opened the fire hydrants along Turk Road over to East Street. And I understand from Dick John that they are going to send letters out to all the people along there, they're saying that they can hook up to the water, the public water system, which is now available. Am I correct, Dick?
That's correct.
And I know I've been asked by so many people over the last, I don't know how many months, when the fire hydrants are gonna be ready to go, because they had these orange bags wrapped around them, they didn't look very attractive. But they now are in operation and ready to go. So that means the people along that area can hook up not only to the water system, but they should have a decrease in their insurance on their houses, because the fire hydrants are available, and that should cut down on, normally they have a lesser rate for people who have, are along the line of fire hydrants and have it available to them in case there is a fire, that they can get right to it and put water on it. So I just wanted to mention that. And Dick, you have anything you wanna add to that?
No, it is ready to go. It's active.
Okay.
We will be sending letters out this week to the residents that have bought that main, and hope to find some that'll wanna become customers with the authority.
Good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, several board meetings. I won't go through all of them. Just a couple of highlights at Park and Rec. They're gonna deliver the new exercise equipment out in Central Park. It's, all the fundraising that we do for the park and Park and Rec gets involved in. This is a, exercise equipment's gonna be right near where the statue of the dancing children...
Sack race.
Sack race, thank you. Looked like they were dancing. Also, if you notice, we are a bird town, not only a tree city, but bird town. So now, and they give you emblems to put on your sign. So you may have noticed seven or so signs entering in the township. It has, it's a new sign, it has us as bird town and tree city. Also, the bird blind was updated. Some slats were opened up and some more, or newer pictures of the birds that you can see. So take a few minutes to go down to the bird blind. It's been reconditioned and refurbished, and I think you'll be happy with that. Some of the other issues that have been coming up, and I just wanna mention, it came up at the EAC Summit again. Our ordinances don't specify exclusively native trees and native shrubs. And that's a big movement right now to get the ordinances in line. So unless there's some other concerns, I'd like to at least bring that to the planning commission and have them take a look at it and see if we can maybe take that step to get just native plants and shrubs planted when the developers come in and develop. And the last thing is, you know, we talk about hard work and no one who works harder than Barbara Lyons. And just to, I'm sure you all saw on today's paper, the Central Bucks Chamber of Commerce at its, on Thursday, will present its 23rd Annual VIA Women in Business Leadership Award. And the winner is Barbara Lyons, for all her hard work in founding of the Bucks County Mediation and Arbitration Center itself. Congratulations, Barbara.
We've got a badge there.
That's it.
Wow. Thank you. And thanks, Tom, for chairing at the May 7th meeting in my absence. I appreciate that. And one of the things I wanted to bring up then, which I will do now, is that I attended Ryan Mannion's, the Mannion Foundation event, I guess it was that Monday or so before. And I was deeply moved. It was an amazing event, and, I mean, it was just, just moved, very moving. And I thought that there has to be something that we can do for our folks who are serving in the military, and Doylestown, who are residents of Doylestown Township, or sons or daughters of residents of Doylestown Township, who come and go from this community to go and fight wars and do service for our country. So that when they return, or when they're absent for a long time, that we can do something in the township to help those families when they return and they're home safely, we can, you know, perhaps it should confirmations, but I would like to be able to identify who those folks are. And I asked one of our residents, who is connected to the Veterans Administration, if he could work with Bucks County to see if we can create an inventory of who those folks are, and then perhaps we can come up with some ways of recognizing them or assisting them in some way. So I just want you to know that I was, I feel like we can do something, at least in our township.
Yeah, I think that's great.
To do, thank you. Thank you for what you do. I had a request for the chief, and in fact, it was put to me like Doylestown Township Police Department can make a lot of money if they would have a car sitting at the intersection of 202 and 313 in Pool's Corner, and give a citation for every car who does not stop at that stop sign. And apparently, the folks are treating that stop sign as a yield, and some aren't even treating it as a yield, they're just going straight through, ignoring that stop sign. And I know it is axon waiting to happen, because I see it all the time. So I think it would behoove us to put some security and some, you know, station of police presence, especially in, anyway, please consider it for your department, timing, because I think it would go a long way to curb some bad behaviors.
We'll begin to monitor.
Thank you.
Especially in the afternoon during the rush hour.
Yeah, that four to, four to 6:30.
Four to six.
Yeah. And just a suggestion, if you're, if you're, I know they're gonna improve that intersection, but if you're on the 202 bypass coming off and you're stopped and you have to wait to go further north on 202, you know where I'm talking, and that backs up a long way, a long way. And a lot of cars could not, not have to sit there, because they're going up to make a left instead of going straight. So if they could improve that shoulder a little bit, cars that are gonna turn left and go towards, go south on 202 instead of going north on 202, could eliminate a lot of that backup. They just need a little bit of road improvement, a little bit of, you know, tar and feathers, you know, to shore up that shoulder, and then you could have turning left. Oh, just a thought, if you could look into it.
We will address that at the next Traffic Advisory Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. The, one last thing, oh, golf outing. I do have a preliminary number, Tom, for the Kids Castle golf outing result. Boston minus $15,000 to Kids Castle contribution.
That's right.
We had a banner day, as Tom said, the weather cleared up just when the shotgun blasted at 9:00 AM. We had almost a sellout crowd of golfers. Had a great time. We made $400 in the tip bucket, just going around with beverages and snacks for the golfers. Lot of contributions up front, a lot of people putting out money at the tables. So it was a real nice event, and John Biederman spoke well on behalf of the Kids Castle Committee yesterday. So almost, well, as Karen said, it's preliminary, $15,000 plus or minus, so I think it's good to go with that. So I think the Kids Castle got another chunk, and it'll be very appreciative, we are very appreciative to be able to help. And the other thing is, I have, I have a mea culpa and an apology to my board, especially to Ryan. My, the letter from the chairman that appears in this issue of the newsletter is really, really sucks, because Barbara Lyons had two grammatical blurbs in her brain, and I can only explain it to you by having misinterpreted an NPR lecture on the use of "I" and "we." So I knew I was doing it right my entire life, and then I decided to change up on the last letter to the editor. So two residents did send me a note saying, "I can't believe an attorney who graduated from Temple Law School could write so badly. Well, I take full responsibility, I do my edit, and I was wrong, and I apologize to my board, and I hope it in no way reflects on the quality of our newsletter." And I suggested that to the two people who corrected me. Does not, and they read through the newsletter, and they were very appreciative of the quality. So I take full responsibility for my humiliating fair paw. Okay, that's all I have. Moving on. Destination, Peace Valley. Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry.
I actually did not have anything. I actually did not have anything, so you could have kept going.
Oh.
Thank you. Instead of me saying, "I have nothing."
I was, I was so...
You were reading my mind.
I was so caught up in my own report. Okay, sorry, Ryan. Destination, Peace Valley.
Yes, the board will recall that we received $200,000 grant from DCNR. We have a proposal from Michael Baker, our bike hike consultant, to complete the work for $45,867.37, of which $40,000 will come from the grant. We're splitting this between New Britton Borough and the township, so we're each absorbing $22,000. However, we get $20,000 reimbursed from the grant, so we're really only responsible for $2,933.69. And I would recommend that we engage them. The bike hike committee is working diligently to move this project along, so...
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Okay. Any questions or comments, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. This is very exciting. This is good stuff. Really good stuff. Township bids on pipe and inlets. Dick, you want to speak to it? We have his memo. We're obliged by law.
Yes, the bid received 21 reviews on the PennBid website, which resulted in one bid in the amount of $7,277.25 from Ferguson Waterworks. I would recommend the township accept the bid so that we can move ahead with buying that materials.
Is there a motion to approve?
For approval.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion approved. I mean, call the question, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
And there's another bid operation?
We had a, we saw bids for pavement sweeping. That received three reviews and one bid from Riley Sweeping out of Fairless Hills in the amount of $37,980, plus $100 per hour for any miscellaneous sweeping outside of the full road sweeping program.
Is there a motion to approve?
I have a question. Are you making a recommendation that we accept this?
I have made the recommendation to accept.
It definitely reached that one, I think.
Question. Dick?
Yes.
I understand there's only one bid, but how is this in line with like previous year, last year, or anything like that?
We had no contract last year. The prior year was running around $15,000 per sweeping. This is looking at $18,000.
$19,000.
Almost $19,000.
Yeah.
How's this working to our budget? Do we have this budgeted, this amount of money?
We do have it budgeted.
That this amount?
Yes. It comes from two places. One is out of the street account, and the second one is out of the Stormwater Account. We are required by permit to sweep our streets.
Yes, sir.
So we can't not do it.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. If this is the best we can do, then I'll, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The seal coating bid?
We had 17 reviews on the seal coating, and we had one bidder from Sun Guard in Bethlehem in the amount of $79,970. I am recommending the board reject that bid in the best interest of the township. I think we can do better than that, and we'll just bide our time this summer until we do it.
Okay. All right.
Is there a motion to reject it?
I'll make a motion, we're here directly. Dick?
I'll second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thanks, Dick. Line and pavement marking bid?
We had seven reviews on the line painting bid. We had two bids, one from Traffic and Safety Signs out of Cannon Square was a low bidder for $25,660. The higher bid was an approximately $34,000. I recommend we go with the Traffic and Safety Signs Inc. for $25,660.
I have a question. Does this include handicap markings on township burn parks?
That comes under the seal coating program. Totally different program.
Okay.
This is for traffic safety.
Okay. This would be along our major roadways, crosswalks, things like that?
Intersections.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second? I'll second. Any questions, other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, is that it? Is there one more? Thanks, Dick. All right, next item on the agenda is the application of the State of Everett requesting a variance, I guess they want to do a B development?
Yeah, they're looking to do a B-15 development there. They do need some variances, as it is not quite the required acreage. I would recommend we leave the matter to the zoning hearing board, let them decide the ramifications and the pros and cons of the issue. Obviously, it is one way to save a historic home in our community, and we've seen that done successfully elsewhere, but they need some relief in order to do that, so I would recommend we leave it to them.
I would agree. I mean, that's what they're...
I think we should send it to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, that's what their survey is.
And the next item is the zoning board hearing application on, for one of the buildings in on Blueberry Hill.
Yes, the board will recall, again, I'm going to say that I recommend this matter go to, leave it to the zoning hearing board. They've dealt with this applicant a number of times. The interesting thing is they will find out that in the interim between approving the previous requirement and what is allowed today, the state law has changed for daycare centers, and they need to comply with that. They will be, I believe, reducing their impervious service a bit, but in order to comply with state law, they do need some relief that was not addressed initially when they went to the zoning hearing board.
I think we should send it to the zoning hearing board, too.
I agree. I mean, it's just a unfortunate timing issue, so I agree, send it to the zoning hearing board and let them review it.
I have a question about this property. It changed hands, we have new owners. Prior owner had an understanding, we had an understanding agreement, I'm not sure if it's written in the development plans or it's part of it, that every time they sold or rent, no, every time they rented a new building, we were supposed to be paid $5,000 towards a $25,000 road improvement. Have we received those funds?
Yes, I believe we have with the Verizon store that just got occupied.
Can you make sure? Because I don't know that we...
We've talked to the developer, sorry to interrupt, but we did talk to the developer about that. Not the developer, but the new owner of the property, we did speak to them about that previous commitment. They did not have a problem in meeting those former obligations, and they did just occupy the, you know, they lost a tenant and they just occupied the Verizon store.
Right, because I think the, if I checked on this, I think the former owner is remiss in a couple of tenancies that we didn't get paid for. Didn't get... So I think we need to, we need to get those paid. That's what I said. Improve that intersection if at all possible. Okay, last item on the agenda is the Schaefer Pyrotechnics Contract.
This is the contract for fireworks this summer during our June 27th summer concert. It's $5,000, and we would recommend this to be approved.
And we have the funds?
Yes, we do. We've raised those from our, for our summer concert.
They are not tax dollar funds?
No.
And this is the contract we have every year, and they have not increased their prices?
No, they have not.
And they give us a...
Amazing show.
Bang story. Okay, is there a motion to...
Move for approval.
I second it. Karen keeps really close eye on this stuff, and she's done a great job, so I'm sure it's fine.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Bills list, you received electronically, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
The June 4th bills list, and the May 22nd bills list?
Move for approval.
You accept a, you move for both?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? On both?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And the treasurer's report for May 22nd, 2013?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements. Next meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors is Tuesday, June 18th. Kids Castle is closed for restoration, anticipated opening is the end of July. 2013 Discount Park tickets are available. You need to purchase them through the administration office or online at doilystownpa.org.com. No, I'm wrong. Doylestownrec.com. We have a new subset, we have a new site for our rec department. Fishing Derby, June 16th, 2013, Rain or Shine at Peace Valley Park. You've got to register, so contact the administration offices for details. Sound of Summer Concert Series begins Wednesday, June 26th, at Central Park, the Robert Eric Band. And the concert starts at 7:00 PM, and it's free. The next concert is June 30th, the Philly Party Band with fireworks at Central Park, 7:30, June 30th, our fireworks, Central Park, 7:30, with the Philly Party Band. Their disco and so on. And then the last item for announcement is Public Common Period for the Minor Act 537 Sewer Facility Plan, 3M component for the Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge, and vicinity is open until only June 14th, 2013. All comments must be in writing and received by the township no later than June 14th. That document, the facilities plan, is online, and it is available, if you need to look at the paper in the office here. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. There are documents.